Okay, we'd like to call the regular session. You're in an exempted village school district board meeting back in the session. And the first thing on the agenda is the approval of the agenda for the rest of the meeting. So it is recommended the Board of Education approve the agenda as presented.
Awesome move.
Second.
All right. Roll call. Mr. Zerber?
Yes.
Mr. Stewart?
Yes.
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Mr. Paul?
Yes.
All right, next on the agenda is public participation. We do have two gentlemen who have asked to talk to the board and present to the board. So they got their copy of the guidelines, so each of them will have three minutes. So first one is Scott Wolf, Mr. Scott Wolf.
Hi, my name is Scott Wolf. My address is 128 Front Street, Suite E. E is in Edward, New Richmond, Ohio. The reason I came tonight, there was a couple of reasons, but the biggest reason was that I am interested in, I think they used to call it the guard dogs or the where the parents came to the school.
Watch dogs.
Watch dogs. Watch dogs. And so last year I sent an email to middle school principal and I did not get a response. So I wasn't sure what the procedure was to go about volunteering. I mean, we go into schools and do fire prevention and stuff like that, but I didn't, I'm not talking about going as a firefighter, I'm talking about going as a parent. So what is the procedure for that? Do I get approval from the school board or from the superintendent? Or do I need to get approval from?
The reason that got started here in Richmond was we went to one of the OSBA conferences on a package of, for watch dogs. At that point, we implemented that program. And it's a nationally recognized program. You apply for, you know, you register with them basically and the school district gets you put at watch dogs. And then there's training and stuff like that. Some watch dogs. Of course, the school needs to make sure that teachers embrace that. I think that in the elementary levels, it embraced pretty well. There's some elementary teachers here that are part of that and receive some of those services. But it kind of just fizzled out of COVID and all that stuff. And I kind of got it started back then and I handed it off to Gary.
Gary Sloan.
Yeah, Gary Sloan was kind of taking care of that. I don't know, I think he kind of fizzled out.
They all took him out.
No reasons.
Yeah, so it fizzled out, but I think it was a good program from my perspective.
So who would I need to talk to about? Or who would I need to get information or, you know, get a background check or whatever you want? If we would, first of all, we want to talk to our principals about it. Because it sounds, it's wonderful, but it's the implementation of program which is something that can be problematic. It's to have people that are not staff members come into your building. It's, that changes things. We want to make sure our staff's comfortable with it, get their feedback, make sure our board's comfortable with it. So we have a, we have a standing district safety committee we could talk about. And also meet regularly with our principals and our admin team. We could talk about and see if there's a desire to renew the program. But that's a, like at Monroe Elementary, they still do it, or they did it last year.
Yes.
Last year.
We had watch dogs in our building last year.
Yeah. I'm pretty sure the middle school had watch dogs in their building last year, but I don't know that for a fact. So I just, I, I'd like to be able to do that. Thank you.
Can I be the chair of it?
It's just like the fire department.
Okay, that's a good idea.
That would teach.
All right, thank you, Mr. Wood. All right, next up, next up is Curtis Ball.
Good evening, guys, how are you doing? Good, good. Couple of things. I know last year, towards the end of school year, we had the fire department back in the schools. Tried to come up every Friday, either at the middle school or the high school, to just hang out at lunchtime. Be with the kids and stuff like that. Haven't reached out this year, obviously because we're only in our, only our third day, second day of school. Going to the kids. Can we do that again this coming school year? Just run it by with, because I know like I just call Amy. Hey, can we come up and shoot this? Sure. Are we okay to do that again for you guys? Just, okay. There was both of you. Awesome. Typical day. No, you're not allowed. Does any particular day work or just whatever day would fit like with the schedules, with rotation?
I like to have the principals weigh in on what day you'd work best.
I know we tried to do Fridays, end of the week kind of thing, just see the kids. If another day works better, I guess I can reach out to Mr. Williams. I think I talked to Mr. Collins last year.
Yep.
At high school.
So just his main campus is Middle School High School?
Yeah, because Monroe already goes to Monroe Elementary, Pierce Towns Locust Corner. So we would just have the on-duty crew, we don't have a run, come up, hang out with the kids during lunch. Talk to them and stuff like that.
Mr. Collins is right behind you.
Definitely, it's great. Okay, if the kids love it, okay, it's a good thing. I just know with everything going on, maybe we try to get back and do, see with the kids. It'd be nice.
All right.
Thanks.
Yep.
Next up is committee reports. First one's Grant.
I'm going to do the Grant report. We had a meeting last Thursday evening. For the second year in a row, Grant has been awarded one of the top workplaces. So recognized, we've got some banners hanging on the side of the building up there, pretty nice. So top workplaces for a second year in a row. Enrollment of Grant this year, the 504 adds up to 16, which is a record number for Grant. Some of those are out of district students or out of, out of the normal realm. We have freshmen, sophomores, juniors and seniors there this year. So pretty exciting programs will be happening. There's a new program called Advanced Manufacturing Academy. Total of 13 seniors participating in that as a partnership with the Système Bilacron, who is, I guess Bilacron, Système Bilacron, whatever they call themselves now. But anyway, they're sending a bunch of machines and bags over and they'll learn how to program, operate those machines. Pretty interesting program. See how that goes. They're also doing a lot of career-based intervention to know the classes they're going to be doing also. There is, one of the things we're looking at is end-of-force assessments. I guess Grant's got beat up over the past few years by the superintendent, since they're beating. Historically, issues with the government geometry classes. The government classes last year, the pass rate was only about 50%. Geometry was 0%. So, you know, the Grant thing has always been, we provide a different roadmap for you to get your degree, basically. And not been a big emphasis on that this year. There's going to be a lot more emphasis on it. They met with the teachers and stuff. They set performance goals around those two programs. To, the goal would be by the end of the year that at least have a 75% pass grade. So they're all bought into it and we'll be sharing those goals with the kids and we'll see where it goes. So it's, they got a pointer on it now, so we're looking at it. Lasering in on it. The Grant Give Back Program, last year they participated in all the different communities. Grant Give Back this year will be on October 13. It's during the school day. And they came down to New Richmond last year, I know I've helped participate down there. Painted some fire hydrants, they did a bunch of cleanup down there, painted some curves and things like that. So be back down here again this year for that. Gary Broadwell, who was a teacher at Grant, they're having a more golf outing. It's an annual event for scholarships, it's September 23rd. I don't know if everyone's interested. And then September 9th, there's a fall community festival. Just be ready to go up and take some rent. Any questions?
That live one up?
All right, next committee is safety.
Yeah, last Friday we had a really tremendous safety committee, a lot of our first responders. Force in the meeting was our principal sharing their upcoming drills and things, so everybody's on the same page. We spent probably nine in percent of the time getting feedback from them on suggested changes for administrative guidelines for, so what for our staff members. We've been working this for well over a year now. Got some outstanding feedback. I've implemented some of those changes, nothing is set yet. My plan is, for here and those watching us virtually, is to bring a finished set of administrative guidelines to our September board meeting. That we're already agreeing with, and to begin to implement the process. And sometime yet this year, either mid-winter into January, that will have staffers carrying still firearms. So that was, that's the extent of the safety committee and our conversation.
All right. So turn it back over to you for superintendent.
Wonderful, thanks so much. We had a great first week of school and just sharing with Mr. DeFaul, Mr. Zerber. It seems like we just had graduation. These summers are like getting closer and closer together. The first three days with staff I thought was probably the best I've been a part of. Our principals, our staff did a great job on the Tuesday. A lot of time on team building, morale building was fantastic. One fight came in on Wednesday, did a recharge reconnect program. And I thought we had just an outstanding complication. Felt really, really good, very relaxed, very positive. We started a tradition that we're not going to be able to stop now. Because when we introduce new staff this year, they got to pick their walk-up song, which was all the rage. It was quite fun. So now the conversations are now, when we're talking staffers, hey, what would have been your walk-up song if you had to? So I had the good fortune, quote unquote, to, I was talking to Mr. Kozlowski a few days ago. I said, Mr. Kozlowski, what would have been your walk-up song? He said, well, it's from the seventies. What, I know music in the seventies. Said Casey in the Sunshine Band. I know Casey in the Sunshine Band, what song? Shake, shake, shake your booty. Torts. So we are thankful we didn't hire Mr. Kozlowski. We are very thankful. So anyway, great start. Then we did our stagger start, which again is a win for our kids and hopefully our staff and our parents. Thursday and Friday, everyone was in today. Wonderful start, our enrollment is very stable. We ended the year last year with 2,033 students. We started the year with 2,038, so almost dead even. We'll probably see a couple of blips after Labor Day, one way or the other. But we'll be pretty close to that number as we get into the year. Because things move so quickly, by the time we meet again as a board and, you know, our community, it'll be in September and that's the day of safety day. So again, there'll be no kids here that day. They're going to have a three-day weekend, but all of our staff, all of our buildings will be doing, we're focusing nothing but safety. We started that a couple of years ago. And hopefully sometime this week soon, we're very close. We've been open this for a while for our students to have badges. The plan is for them to get to swipe on the bus, when they get off the bus. So the parents know when they're on the bus, they know when they get off the bus, they can pay for the lunches with this. And eventually they want to be able to pay for their events, athletic events and sporting events and so forth. So we're very, very close. We think that a large percentage of our kids will receive their badges yet this week, in all we know. We're really, we're really excited about that. Mr. Zerber, that's sort of the extent of my comments.
Okay. Next, the next order of business on the agenda is human resource science. Mr. Miller.
Thank you. Just as a repeat, and board, I know that you know this, so we go, I call it go live. So the Thursday before, the Monday of our board meetings, we go live with our agenda. So our community can see, this is what we're, this is the business that we're going to discuss. Because the board time to look at, and then if we need to make any changes, we can make some small changes. But once it goes live, it has to be something significant to add on. That's always been my philosophy, like major. And when we do that, again, in the interest of transparency, I'll put it in red. And so that's happened here in our resignations. Our girls soccer program's going through a bit of a transition due to some health concerns. Our head coach is going to step down. Mr. Foote, Mr. Stewart are working very, very hard on a wonderful replacement plan. Had several conversations with them today, and I'll have more information about that coming up. So that's why that is in red, it was an addition after the agenda alive. We're hiring no new certified employees, just a change in salary replacement due to production of their transcripts. Just some great people coming on board for our classified positions, like the welcome back Jimmy Hetrick. We're very excited, they skillset the knowledge that he brings to our maintenance department. Same thing with Susanna Wright with a late add for a substitute classified employee. Our band instructors who work band camp. And then for our fall, we try to do these, a couple of meetings in advance. So all the ones in black have already been previously approved. The ones in red are the new hires for this, this board meeting. Similar to what we did for summer school, we do a blanket hire for teachers and staff members who would be interested in working detention, Friday school, Thursday school, things of that nature. And we had some wonderful math professional involvement last week. And I don't know if you'd like to pay these people for coming in during their summertime. Two long-term subs. With our adult special education program, three student workers who will work up to, up to 10 hours a week. And Mr. Zerber, that is the human resources consent adjustment.
Okay, it is recommended the Board of Education approve items 7A through 7G.
Awesome move.
Great, Mr. Wood.
A second.
And Mr. Paul? Yes.
Any questions?
Questions? Yeah.
Roll call.
Mr. Stewart?
Yes.
Mr. Paul?
Yes.
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Mr. Zerber?
Yes.
The next item under personnel is, we also had a large number of our, our teachers had, had to unpack a tremendous amount of their new math supply, really excited about implementing this year. And again, this is on their, on their summer break. You might also like to pay them for their work.
Okay, it is recommended the Board of Education approve items, item 7L.
Awesome move.
A second. Discussion. Roll call.
Mr. Paul?
Yes.
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Mr. Stewart?
Yes.
Mr. Zerber?
I'm staying. Thank you. Security.
So we're starting the new school year. We're thankful for our relationship that we have with our first responders. What you'll have in the attachments is the Pierce Township contract to provide security for Locust Corner. The Claremont County contract to provide coverage for Monroe. And then lastly, the also another contract through Prema County to provide coverage for our football games.
Okay. All right, it is recommended the Board of Education approves the police detail contracts. The three that are listed there, football game as well as drill infantry and Locust Corner.
Seven.
A second.
Discussion. Okay, roll call.
Mr. Zerber?
Yes.
Mr. Stewart?
Yes.
Mr. Paul?
Yes.
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Thank you so much.
Memorandum of understanding.
Yeah, we have two mechanics and their positions, they do a lot of work for us. And they drive and they, they're on call and they do field trips and so forth. We were down a, we were down a mechanic. And so one mechanic was on call for weeks and weeks and we'll still have to do that for a few more weeks. The contract didn't allow that. This will give us the flexibility to have one of our mechanics be on call for more than just a week or two at a time. And both sides are agreed that this needs to happen.
Yeah, it is recommended the Board of Education approve the memorandum of understanding as presented.
Mr. Wood?
A second.
Great, discussion, questions? Okay, roll call.
All right, Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Mr. Paul?
Yes.
Mr. Stewart?
Yes.
Mr. Zerber?
Yes.
All right, treasure report. Thank you, Mr. Zerber. Pretty short swing, we have our regular meeting minutes and our financial reports. Be approved as well as our instruction committee minutes. We have a disposal list of one item. We have school bus routes which require to be approved. This will come from the new software this year. We also have payment, Lula transportation, which we always have here. And those are all the items I have with the, the treasury part. Oh, confirming purchase orders, I'm sorry. We do have four confirming purchase orders. We'll see a little bit more in July, end of fiscal year, and caught up on things. Two of those were kind of ours a little bit, one was with some information we needed about consumer power playing. The other was for certain. So almost over that. That'll be decided. We go up a little bit on confirming purchase order.
Yes.
That written part up above. Because I think it's supposed to be 5,000 for an SBA instead of 6,000.
Is it?
Yes. I just saw your purchase order, so. Okay.
It'll be fine, it'll be fine.
Yeah, well, so it's fine. Thank you, can't catch up.
Okay.
All right. Okay, so. It is recommended the Board of Education approve items 11A through 11G.
Seven.
A second, your second.
A second.
A second. Any discussion or questions? Okay, roll call.
All right, Mr. Stewart?
Yes.
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Mr. Zerber?
Yes.
Mr. Paul?
Yes.
And then item I is, item J rather, approval. A recognition for approval for item I, 10I, which is the donation list. We have donations. Okay, it is recommended the Board of Education approve item 10I.
Awesome move.
A second.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Paul?
Yes.
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Mr. Stewart?
Yes.
Mr. Stewart?
Seven.
Next on the agenda is Michael Burns, project finance and representation.
I'm invited, I'm invited, Mr. Burns to give us a presentation on our financing options based upon our infrastructure project for energy optimization, whether for five years. So we can hear those in public session. Thank you, Mr. Burns.
Yeah, thank you, everyone, and good evening. My name is Mike Burns, I work there. And really, that's a thank you for, I work with a couple hundred school districts throughout the state of Ohio on protecting financing from large bond issues for school facilities to, you know, small capital projects such as this. We have some lease purchases. I do a lot of work with those organizations. We're not related whatsoever. We just have a lot of mutual clients. We're therefore a lot of mutual respect between the two companies. And that's kind of how I got introduced to the school district. We started talking about this project. We started talking about how we're going to fund this project. And I just shared a couple of findings and ideas with the treasurer via Zoom meeting a couple of weeks ago. I proposed a good idea for the company today. So thank you for having me tonight, I appreciate it. I do have some information to hand out, if you don't mind. I'm really here to answer any questions that you guys have. This is fully informational. So if you have questions, please speak up, I'm happy to answer them. I know this school doesn't issue a lot of debt, that's a good thing. Badly for my business, of course, but it's a good thing for you. You don't issue a lot of debt, you don't do a lot of financing. So I thought it'd be helpful just kind of share what financing you could pursue inside of your core. With schools in Ohio, all schools, public schools, they're very reliant on how much debt they can issue. Your unvoted debt capacity is very, very small. It's one tenth of one percent of your tax base. For a school district this size, it's pretty small, a couple hundred thousand. That's similar to what most school districts are. You know, most schools don't have the ability to issue a lot of unvoted debt unless you're one of the major schools throughout Ohio. So the workaround here for projects such as HVAC and LED projects and school additions or any kind of capital project, if you don't want to go into the hurgers, because you're trying to keep the taxpayers' mileage as low as possible, taxes as low as possible. And if you can afford the payment, what you can do is what we call a lease purchase. A lease purchase is not debt, it's a lease. So it's not debt. And since it doesn't, since it's not debt, it does not count towards your unvoted direct debt capacity. So it really is no debt capacity when it comes to leases. It comes down to what can you afford as a school district, we pay our lease basis. Had a nice conversation with the treasurer, I could tell he's very knowledgeable about his numbers. We talked about his forecast a little bit. We looked at what's going on in the future, we looked at the savings involved with this energy project if you decide to move forward. It's really those conversations, I think we're both pretty comfortable, I don't want to speak for the treasurer, but I'm pretty comfortable that the school district can afford a lease purchase if you decide to move forward. The nice thing about lease purchase, it doesn't require any approval through the LSC. It can finance any capital improvement. And the other nice thing if you do is we call it direct placement. So as a direct placement, I'm looking at this first page now. So if you go to the second page, I think you have the red one, it has a whole lot of small print on it. I apologize for the small print. But as a direct placement, what we do, if you choose to, you can hire someone such as myself. And what I do is I have to prepare a term sheet. And then I'll send a term sheet out to 50, 60 local, regional and national banks. Make sure we include all your local banks, regional and national banks. And I tell them, do not call the treasurer, don't call the superintendent. Call me with any questions. That way I can kind of manage the situation and answer questions the way that helps us get approved. Plus, they know when I'm involved, I do probably about 30 of these a year, 40 of these a year for different schools and villages, counties around the state. They know it's going to be ultra competitive. They know it's just not the treasurer calling up my bank. They know there's going to be 50 or 60 banks looking at your finances. The one you see in front of you that looks like this is Bellevue City Schools. And that's one I just priced yesterday, last week, sorry, on August 17th. And you see, most of the banks come back and they ask on opportunity, very, very common, kind of see why. If you go back about a year or two before this whole inflation, high rates, liquidity issue, where at least we'd have more than eight banks bid. A lot of banks were kind of bounding out, they know they're not very competitive because their interest rates too high, so not even a certain time looking at it. But for Bellevue, we got about eight proposals back. And you see the rates range from 3.98 all the way up to almost 7%, which is a big range there between the banks. So this process, I'll be in, if you decide to work with me, if you decide to move forward with the energy optimization project, then we'll give you the lowest rate out there, we'll make sure of it. So that's really the big advantage of using a lease purchase and in doing this direct placement. The big things that you need to think about as a board and as an administration is your ability to repay. Again, I had a nice conversation with the treasurer and he knows his numbers and sure he does all know that. Yeah, I think we feel comfortable with that. But that's the biggest thing, is what's your ability to repay, are you comfortable with paying? Besides that, there's only, there's two types of leases, and I'll move on, I want to try to make this quick tonight. First one is what we call equipment lease. We may be able to do an equipment lease for you on this project. The equipment lease, all the bank takes the security interest, what we call lien, or LCC lien on the equipment. So they're going to put a lien on the LED lights, they're going to put a lien on the borderless system. So if you don't repay the lease, or you don't annually appropriate funds, repay the lease, the bank could, if they wanted to, come in and take the lights out. And they could take the borderless system out. But we all know realistically, it's not what bank it is, they don't want to leave newspaper. XYZ bank, England took the lights out of the local school, right? It's bad news. But the bank is also bad news for your school district. So it's kind of a loose security structure. It's the best structure we've got. The other kind is what we call ground lease. Same general idea, that with schools, cities, counties, townships, by law, by the rights code, you cannot pledge a mortgage on your home, I'm sorry, on the school facility like you can on your home. So what we do in this world is a pledge of mortgage or a commitment, is they pledge ground lease on the property and then they lease you back the improvements of the school building. That is a nice way to do financing as well. And that may be the way we decide to go, because I know one bank that's really competitive on rates, meaning low rates, would want a ground lease, not an equipment lease. But that's the way we may go too, is pledge a ground lease. And again, that's my job to go out and market financing, gather all the information and then come back and share. then come back and share something like this with the Treasurer and Superintendent, and say, it's not my decision, it's not my firm's decision, it's your decision to pick which bank you want to work with. The other thing you notice on this Bellevue list is the White Green Road is a large national bank, they were the lowest bidder, but the winning bank was a second place bank slightly higher, three ninety-eight versus four point oh five. They chose to keep it local. And they also liked the call or pay, pay a warranty on. So that's your choice as well, you don't have to take the local. Local bank comes in, we can go with the local bank, that's what we decided. Any questions on the structure before I kind of go on to actual numbers? Any questions on what a lease is, or equipment lease, or ground lease, anything like that?
What could potentially happen if you default on a ground lease?
So that's a great question. So every year, a lease, the risk to the bank is any given year by law, you as a board could say, you know what, you don't have money to repay that lease, so we're going to non-appropriate funds to repay that lease, you can stop paying fees. Just like all you guys, you know, filed bankruptcy and stopped making payments on the mortgage, right? You can do it, it's not necessarily the best thing to do, you don't want to have that in your future. But if you did do that, not appropriate funds, uh, what could happen, for paper, the legal word, is they could come in, and they could be the alley facility, and then lease that facility to like a Y N C A or another charter school or whatever, only during the term of your lease. So if we go for a ten-year lease, and you decide year two, you're not repaying this anymore, you're done, really the bank could kick you out of the school, lease it out for eight years, and then, I'm sorry, for fourteen years, and release plus five more. And then at that point, going goes back to the school. They can never sell your building. They can never get rid of your building, they can't approach your building, they can only kick you out for a period of time. Again, that will not happen, and in fact, in the state of Ohio, that's never happened to any entity, so to my knowledge, per law, that's what they're doing. Makes sense? And for that reason, you always have a ground lease five years longer than the lease of the finance. But as soon as the lease of the finance is paid off, the ground lease expires right away. Okay? If they add five more years on, you can make more rent, they'll be parried. Makes sense? Good question. Any other questions? Before I kind of summarize enough of? So, um, if you look at this final page, it looks like this. You see I put on here two rates, two columns. The first middle column is conservative rate, meaning higher interest rate. And what I did here, I assumed the rate are, you can see they're about four point five percent. What I did is I looked at Bellevue, and I picked kind of the middle line rate, because I think that's conservative, I can get a bank in for at least that. And ran numbers, kind of worst, in my mind, worst case scenario. You see, the project costs about a million two, you see the annual payments about a hundred fifty-seven thousand. The next three lines are savings per energy optimizers. And I can tell you historically, for my clients that work with energy optimizers, they actually do a pretty good job of coming close to those savings, or actually doing better, see what the savings are, they guarantee. Uh, and then you see the net payment of eighty-three thousand a year. So, the Treasurer, you need to make sure that you're comfortable with, worst case scenario, about eighty-four thousand a year to cover that, that lease for the next ten years. Then you can see a more aggressive rate. More aggressive rate is the top one or two banks on Bellevue. So I'm assuming a four percent rate, kind of like the top two banks for, and you see what it does to the payment, or the payment part about four grand a year. So net, after all savings, about eighty thousand, it's a shortfall in the payment, that's not covered by energy savings. I think you're be in between those somewhere, hopefully closer to the aggressive. But I can also tell you, right now, rates are increasing, and they're increasing quickly. Since we first started, rates went up about a hundred percent, which was about five percent. So these rates are as of today. I don't know what's going to happen tomorrow, they could drop. I don't control interest rates, I just shop. It's, it's a low rate, so. That's, that's the financing, if you decide to move forward, we'll be in between there somewhere, I don't know if it's that. Last thing I'll mention before I sit down, because again, I don't want to take too long time. The nice trust is informational, I'm here to answer questions, make sure everyone's comfortable with the structure. If you decide to move forward with the capital project, if you decide to move forward with finances, and I'd love to opt in to work with the school. I work with a lot of schools in this area, throughout the state, I'd love to opt in to work with you. If you decide to move forward, we have a resolution prepared for your next September board meeting. And because I said interest rates are increasing, I'm hoping to meet here from the Treasurer or Superintendent in the next couple of days, you guys kind of give me a soft thumbs up of, yeah, we're going to move forward, I can go ahead and start getting out the financing right away, and then have the term sheets come back the day after the board meeting, because you can not, not officially accept any planning for the resolution plans. So by me doing some work upfront, we can lock the interest rates in more quickly. But the key point is, if you say no, come next board meeting, you go down, there's zero financial risk. You don't call, you don't pay me anything, you don't pay your attorney anything, you only pay us the yield clauses. So it's really no financial downside risk.
We would know the rate before the resolution was proposed, if I'm correct?
Probably the day after, maybe the day of. Because I don't want to put the car too far in front of the horse, because there's one bank that will want to know within twenty-four hours, you accept the vote, so. So I could maybe get the sheet that looks like this back to you, the day of, and you share with the board that evening, but then you would have to step in. So, again, there's no financial commitment, it's just cost of business, it's not about any questions. I wanted to keep it short, but I wanted to make sure you had some questions here.
Questions?
Thank you, everyone. Thank you, Treasurer.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, Mr. President.
You're welcome.
Item twelve on the agenda is CCIP federal fund.
I'm back, it's another year. The auditor likes to see on the record of our presentation of the CCIP funds. These are entitlement funds that come from the federal government to the enrichment schools. Uh, you each have to enter a place, and on the board agenda, people in the audience can go to the information that's included. We receive funds in Title I, which is in basic reading and math improvement, Title II in supportive effective instruction, and in Title IV in student support and academic enrichment, and then Title VI is special education funds, I D E A, and then the last portion is early childhood special education funds. In Title I, we use our four hundred and fifty-one thousand, nine hundred and fifty-four dollars to fund five reading specialist positions in two elementaries. It, uh, it covers the five salaries and almost their benefits. Uh, we have to, in Title I, set aside funds for non-public school districts that choose to participate, uh, in delivering Title I services to our children in their programs. And at this point, we have one, uh, school building that has chosen to participate, and they'll, they'll get an earmarked amount from us, and I'm working with them now. We also have to set aside, as a result of federal funds, uh, some homeless transportation funds, and we will use that to transport, uh, children who fall homeless during the school year, uh, and we'll spend, send special transportation to get them to and from school during the period of their homelessness. In Title II funds, we received sixty-five thousand, one hundred and eighty-seven dollars. That pays for a portion of a, uh, an instructional design coach, a tech coach. We have two in the district. The curriculum and technology budget pays for one and a quarter, and then the other three quarters is paid for by Title II funds. In Title IV funds, student support and academic enrichment, think of the title, it's support and enrichment. We use these funds to support a program that helps us to identify and, and, uh, and pull all of the data on student achievement together on those students, so that we have a real good record of how kids, how kids are performing on their Ohio Diagnostic Assessments, on the N W E A map assessments. And the other portion of this is used this year, a little portion of this is used this year, because we're moving from a paper pencil, uh, literacy assessment that we administer three times a year, and, and it's the DIBLs assessment, we're moving that to, uh, an online, uh, instant program, and we're making that transition as we speak. The student support piece is all of that information goes back to the intervention teams in the buildings, and identifies students who need additional support, and then they are provided additional support in our tiered, uh, multi-tiered system of support program. We have raw time in the elementaries, where we identify reading groups, and we have tier three, uh, reading groups, and they go to the reading specialists. All of those are identified through all of those benchmarks assessments, which is all, uh, pulled from the data systems that this program pays for. Title IV, I'm sorry, Title VI, the special education funds, is five hundred and twenty-nine thousand, two hundred and thirty-three dollars. And it pays for about a quarter of our special ed services that we access, uh, from the county. Uh, this one happens to pay for speech and occupational therapy in our buildings, and it also, this year, is paying for, uh, eight thousand dollars worth of coaching of our preschool program, uh, because we had some turnover in our preschool, we got some new people, new faces in, in, in the program, and I'm expecting that we're going to have some on-site evaluations, and there's an expectation to meet the step-up quality requirements. And that stipend hasn't, a, a coach coming in and working with our preschool staff, and they started working there today. And finally, uh, we received eight thousand dollars in funds, in entitlement fund for early childhood special education. We have two special education, uh, early childhood special education teachers in the district. Eight thousand dollars doesn't make a dent in, in what it costs this district, but that's, that's the effort from the federal government to provide, uh, preschool funding, uh, for, for those with special needs. Okay? So, there's a lot there. The auditor likes that here that we presented this to the board, and I'm always interested in taking suggestions from the board and from our community of how we might spend our title funds. Okay? And they can always reach out to me through our email, in our, uh, in our website, and, and make their suggestions. Any questions that you might have on CCIP funds? Great, I'm going to step back, and then I'm going to step back forward. Take off my CCI proof hat. Is it my supplemental contract, you mean?
Yes.
All right. So I'm going to ask the supplemental contract committee to join me. So that means you have to come on. Come on. I've had the pleasure of meeting with all of you and making this presentation in, in board committees in the spring. Uh, this work actually started about eleven months ago, and, and these people on this committee have been really passionate and really invested in this process. Some changes in the recommendation that is before you today, and that is I decoupled the athletic director change recommendation that came in the original recommendation, because, um, there's not a change there. Now, that's probably something the Board of Education may want to consider in the future, where there is a change, but that's not important now, it's not needed now. And the other portion is, that's been decoupled from this, is the weight, facility, and the strength training coach position and projection. At some point in time, that, that will be nice to address. Our athletes, all of them, all of them, need to be protected with proper strength training and strength coaching in the proper facility. I understand it's, it's not appropriate at this point in time, in fact, the most important part of this recommendation are the supplemental contracts. And, and we have a hundred and forty-four coaches and board advisors and supervisors in the district. And they, they play a tremendous role. They're not classroom teachers, but they play a tremendous role and have a positive impact on all of our students. And, and they really, really make a difference in, in developing the whole town, whether it's an athlete, a musician, a, a, a theater person, they really make a difference, and they impact lives just like, just like classroom teachers. What we did about eight years ago, eight, eight months ago, I'm sorry, eight years ago, eight months ago was we began to gather information from nine comparative school districts uh, in, 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 in our area. And it was important to gather as many as we could to just get some raw data and see how we compare with other school districts. We did that, we did it, and caused all supplemental contracts that we could compare, and not everybody's contracts are the same. You know, some have this, and this, and they, they, they have incremental increases and, and other types of stipends. We chose not to do that. We, we tried to take our Western Brown, Batavia, Bethel, West Claremont, Gosia, Clinton Massey, Wilmington, Redding, and Three Rivers were the nine districts we looked at. And we tried to boil it down to those that we deemed to be most similar to us, and we really threw out several. And we ended up with Batavia, Gosia, Clinton Massey, and Three Rivers. And of those four, the most similar, and the most similar according to the Ohio Department of Education, is Three Rivers. And, and it compares on our local report card high in comparison demographics with our community, and with our school buildings, and our school programs. So we really tried to use that as a target. We didn't try to be the best, we didn't make recommend, recommendations to, to be the top hay, we wanted to be fair, and we wanted to be in the middle. And we looked hard at all of our recommendations, and, and included in this report are, I think, eight or nine pages of supplemental contract recommendations for coachings, and then supplemental contract recommendations for advisors. And that captures the academic advisors, and that captures the, the theater and the music, uh, uh, programs as well. So we made recommendations and, and and compared them with Three Rivers, compared them with the median of the four school districts by which we most closely compared, and those recommendations came to you. But we didn't start here, because we haven't done anything for a long time in this district. And because there are members of this committee who have been very passionate about this, and Rick Mahan, and Nicole Parker, and Vex McConnell, and Greg Minder, and, and Cos, and, and Athletic Director Foot, this, this has been a passionate group. We, we really wrestled with some, some tough decisions, and had some really fun conversations, and, but, but tried to be fair for this school district. So, let's go back in time, Nicole, if you don't mind addressing the board just historically, where we, where we, where we were, how far we've come, how long it's been?
In a minute. So I grabbed this, I don't know, maybe you remember the good old days when this is what our contracts look like. It's been a while. But I pulled this one out of my cabinet, this is, um, let's see, this one is two thousand five to two thousand eight. At that time, we were paying, uh, you know, an amount to our, for our supplementals, and then in the two thousand eight contract, uh, we negotiated a two point two five percent increase for eight, nine, nine, ten, ten, eleven. So, six point seven five over the course of a three-year contract. So that last raise came in two thousand eleven. There was board action on the sixteenth of September in two thousand ten, where we made changes to that supplemental table. We moved some people around, we took off these orphaned venues, we added some positions. But that was the last time that any of these have had a raise of any kind. So our varsity football coach has been making the exact same amount since two thousand and ten, thirteen years. Um, that goes for our music stuff, our theater, um, you know, every coach, not just varsity football, it's just one that tops the list. So after that six point seven five increase, there's been absolutely nothing. The only other thing that we've contributed, uh, towards The only other thing that we've contributed towards supplementals is in two thousand seventeen, we made a request to move a couple of positions. One of the things we did was we bumped varsity wrestling up to the highest paid position. At that time, it was Coach Schinkel, who, you know, I don't know, twenty years or something of being a wrestling coach. And he worked to the postseason, he took kids to state every single year, incredibly long season. And that was one of our recommendations that the board did approve in two thousand and seventeen. I think there was one other, I couldn't find your reference, I'm sorry. But again, it was no increase in pay. And all of these people who held these positions haven't had any increase in pay in thirteen years. The other thing that I just wanted to share was, we established this protocol for creating a supplemental committee outside of contract negotiations. Because it's closed in contract negotiations. You know, when the teachers come in and sit down and negotiate, this is not, this isn't really about our teachers. It is part of our contract, and it is something that the union is, you know, cares about and is concerned about. But when you're doing that contract negotiation, this is always the thing that gets pushed off to the side. The other thing is, is that negotiations team from the union side of it is made up of teachers from each building, as it should be, so that everybody's represented. This obviously is not. This committee is made up of people, including the athletic director, which is, I mean, you know, you have to have the athletic director on this committee. And all of us have held multiple supplementals, some of us for twenty-plus years, you know, and multiple. So we really have an understanding of what people do in these positions, what it's worth, where the value is, how much time and effort and energy and frustration and anxiety and annoyance go into some of these things. And that's what we want to see on a supplemental committee. And the most important thing is it becomes a collaboration. Because we bring in, you know, we had Cos on the team and Mr. Fry on the team this time. And we want to do that as a collaboration with administration about what do we need, what do our kids need, what can we do? So we set this up about ten years ago as something that we could look at outside of negotiations. Which is why we're bringing it here to you tonight. Because it feels like this is the right way to go about making these changes and suggesting these changes to you. And so we, you know, we hammered out, we negotiated all day one day to hammer out some language about how we can do this. And part of that was that if we put this committee together, if we get this work done, then we could share this with you so that you can take a look at it. I would also suggest before I sit down and be quiet, we are open to any questions, ideas, you know, concerns, whatever, you know. We're ready to answer your questions as well. They all are.
Thank you.
They are.
I asked Cos to speak to the athletic coaches supplemental contract recommendations, mostly because, not because other people aren't as invested in the committee. But Cos has been in a couple of different places as an athletic director and as a head coach. And he can speak to his experiences there and the experience that we had here. So Cos?
I think I stand her here fine. So yeah, this committee, the work that this committee did, I've been on a lot of committees for twenty-seven years. This was, it felt wonderful. Because it's like we really took a dive, tore down all the knowledge, we got a lot of work done. And as far as my knowledge, and I was varsity coach, multiple different sports for ten years, an assistant, like you said, athletic director. The big thing that I kept, we kept bringing coming up is the time. Okay, when I played sports, football season was football season. Basketball season was basketball season. I always got cut, but it was, you know, it was specific time. That's not how it is anywhere, okay? Take away, you know, the gas and all that. No, I've never met a coach in my life, a high school coach, who makes their living off of just coaching. We don't do it for that. It's for the kids, it's we enjoy, I mean, coaches are teachers. I don't care if they're actually of teacher relations or not. But the amount of time in sports these days, they're year-round activities. It's one of the reasons why, and Coach Minor here, I mean, there's wrestling all year round, there's football all year round, there's basketball all year round. We have swimmers that train, you know, that take it serious, runners running all year round. So coaching has become a three hundred sixty-five days out of the year event. It's not just an in-season. And there's just a lot of work and effort that goes into it. When we looked at this and we took that into account, what can we do to kind of, to help these coaches show that we support them as they go year-round in every sport that they do? I actually had to quit track because I was football coach and they were both intertwined from winter track to the summer track football. And our coaches are doing that here, and we're competitive. I mean, that's one of the reasons that I always followed Rich Menlope, Richard, we're competitive. In order to continue that and show him some love, our coaches, and that's why we looked at of that. And why the rankings, you know, he moved up, we made all sorts of changes, and kind of looked at everything. And this has been, like I said, it's been a great committee to be a part of. And my outside opinion, I've never got a coaching stipend for a year, it's thirteen years is a long time. And some of our coaches who have been here for thirteen years, who does that? For continually getting the same pay in year in, year out. As the price of gas in thirteen years is dramatically changed in different situations like that. So I've kind of done every role. Any questions that you have, I would love to answer and talk about it, I love talking about coaching now that I'm not doing it.
One of the things that we did in this process is we really went into every individual position. And over thirteen years, we had several positions that had been split. Not just to add numbers, but because we needed specialty coaches. Because as Cos was talking, we've become so competitive, sports have become so competitive. We needed this kind of a coach and this kind of a coach, and we couldn't get another stipend. So we get people to volunteer to take half of their pay so we could add another staff member to offer that additional specialty for our kids. And we just as a committee, if a coach was needed, we felt it was needed. We looked at coaching positions. And if it was needed, then we put it in here as a recommendation. And you'll see some of those that were recommendations previously split, now a position. The other thing that we looked at was a liability issue. And in track and field, when you're out here in the spring, and we've got middle school track, high school track going on at the same time, it's just droves of kids. And we're on the track, we've got the field, the high jump at this end, the pole vault at this end, the distance is over there, the shot's over there. We don't have coaches in each of those areas. We only have to have one coach in a specific area, I believe, pole vault. But we didn't have people in distance, and we didn't have people in shot, but somebody got hit in the head with a shot. We have to have, for our own, this school district liability, we have to have people covering critical areas. So that's a recommendation that comes in there as well. That's how deeply we dug to take a look at these positions. I'm going to ask Paige to speak on the non-athletic supplemental contracts. Because those are equally important and valuable to the offerings that we have in our school district. Paige?
I'm going to kind of hang back if that's okay? Because I feel like, I just want to say, I really enjoyed the experience of being the only non-athletic person. I learned so much about the challenges that they're facing and really empathized with the challenges and the lack of coaches and things that were going on. So what I'm addressing, here to address our two areas, the theater and the music positions and a couple of changes. I think the one that might be the most confusing when you're looking at this is the theater, the way the directors were being paid. There are three high school productions a year traditionally. There's one big musical and there are two plays, football and winter play. The way that the pay scale was structured with the supplementals reflected probably fifteen years ago. When you had one person who was hired to be in charge of the drama department. And she did the musical and picked up one play. And my understanding is that someone came along and said, we'd love to have another play, can we do this? So she had this pretty substantial level eleven, you know, supplemental, which is just, you know, second to the top to cover everything. And then they came up with a smaller supplemental for a play. And if you haven't ever been behind the scenes with a musical or a play, they're very different creations. Because of the music, the choreography, the sound system, all that, there's a lot more people involved. It's just, it's a way bigger project. What ended up happening is when she left, when other staff members changed and took these supplementals, someone looked at it and said, oh, we have three productions a year. And we have a big supplemental and we have a small supplemental. So whoever does two of these gets the big one, and whoever does one gets the small one. Which is logical, except the person who took two took the two plays. So it left the two play supplemental at level eleven, five thousand forty-four dollars, which is a big, that's a big supplemental, I wish. And then assistant director at level six, two thousand one hundred eighty-two, that's what they're paying the musical director. It's been that way for a number of years. It doesn't make sense in a way. So what we did is we split those three productions up to do three separate supplementals. So that whoever comes along and says, I'd love to direct the play, there's a supplemental for it. And it is a, what we're converting to this level H, it is nineteen hundred nine dollars. If you direct the play, which is way less, it's a lot of work, but a lot less complicated than a musical. And we've got two designated play supplementals, which is level H, nineteen hundred nine dollars for a show. So if somebody comes along, they say, I'd love to direct the play, this is what they would be paid. For the musical, it's higher level F, it's a three thousand two hundred seventy, three hundred of proposal. So the musical is, it's a long, long, and very multifaceted process. So that, I wanted to explain sort of the thinking of breaking that, those two big large into three. And then we added two assistant directors in the proposal because you can't direct musicals. I've helped with stuff, I've helped with music, I was given what was called the pit conductor to do music. And that reflects twelve years ago, fifteen years, I don't know, when they had a pit, bam. And we hadn't done that, we could just record it for you. So it was an eight hundred eighteen dollar supplemental. When I came along and said, hey, I'll help train with the music, they threw that my way. But I've been at all the rehearsals and doing the assistant. So they threw in, in our proposal, a level J, twelve hundred twenty-six dollar assistant director for both the middle school musical and the high school musical. And the only other thing in here was the middle school music theater was bumped up to the same level as like the music supplementals. So what is now called level G, and it was a level six under the old system. There weren't really a lot of changes in the music department, other than moving the two middle school band director, no. There's a middle school band, high school band, middle school music, high school music. And of those four positions, three of us were being paid twenty-one eighty-two, the level six. And one of us was being paid, and this was really convoluted. Well, one of us was not being paid, which I just found out this morning. I just found it up this morning, because I was trying to clarify, because I didn't understand this.
We appreciate your help too.
Yeah, I mean, it wasn't me which was really awkward. Because I moved into that position as a fairly new person at the middle school, high school. And they gave me the same supplemental I had been getting at Lucas Corner, the level six, two thousand one hundred eighty-two dollars. I would have taken a pay cut to be a middle school director versus an elementary music teacher. So they were like, okay, yeah, you got that level six. But apparently one person got the middle school and high school, another person got nine.
Sometimes things happen because of the names of people over the last thirteen years. And sometimes it just evolved that way because of personalities and principles. So we tried to clean that up.
We did clean it up, and it's been longer than thirteen years since I've helped like that. And some of it was shifts in job assignments. And then the supplemental shifted because they weren't doing the same responsibilities, and it never shifted back, is my understanding.
Well, we did some really good work. One of the things in here as well is a recommendation for the audiovisual captain in the district. And Tracy would know this very well, and Matt as well. And that is, someone is responsible for all of the AV in the theater. Somebody's responsible for the lighting and the sound system and the management thereof, for all of the programs that go on in there. And then when we had convocation and we're wondering who can do that, we know who to call. Because there's somebody. Because previously it was maybe the previous director, who was the, that director retired, who was the next one, had the ball play. Okay, maybe they know. And we tried to make that a position, and it's a designated position, it's a go-to person. They own it, they take care of it. When people own things, they take care of things, and they protect your investment. Greg Minor and Rick Mahan, Doug Foote are here as well. You guys, there's an open mic contest if you'd like to.
I'm good.
Don't let that take away from what they contributed. Because we had some really, really good conversations, and we also had a lot of fun. But we dug in really deeply on this, and I want you to know that. One of the things that I also want to share, and that is...
Just, when Paige said that about speaking to someone today, I think John said this in the, in his overview, but it was really long and I didn't read the whole thing. But, yes, it did. But we did talk to, we surveyed people who currently have supplementals.
We did.
We had a couple of people reach out and said, hey, I had a supplemental, you know, I was a coach for fifteen years and I'm not anymore, but I'd love to give my opinion. I said, I want your opinion. So, and then we sought people out, if they hadn't responded, we were like, hey, we want to talk to you about this. So we really did try and, you know, hit all the people who are doing these jobs and have done these jobs. That was an important piece of...
Yeah, I didn't mean to sound like I was last minute. It was an assumption I had. I assumed the four directors of the middle school, high school, they were already paid a supplemental because they were four here. I thought that was safe to assume, yeah. We learned that.
Thank you for talking to me.
I just, can I go in?
No.
Oh.
No, you don't.
Thank you for the sound system. Thank you for the sound.
Sounds good.
Thank you. Thank you, I meant to say that. No, 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 that's all I'm going to say, it's like, almost brought me to tears. It's been so long needed, and it's very exciting.
That's right. Thank you. One of the things that I wanted to just wrap with, I think it's on the last page of a last chart, and that is the academic leadership. Dr. Hollisworth is back here. And I want you to note that the recommendations here are the stipends for the academic leadership. We have in the past, for the past several years, had four paid department chair positions, all at the high school. And they were twenty-one hundred eighty dollars or something like that. The committee believes strongly that the academic program, because of the structure that we've added in the program, because of the adoptions that we've added in the last several years and more to come, that there needs to be building leadership, and principals need to have that kind of representation on their team and their building. So we took those four positions that were twenty-one eighty, and we reduced them to a thousand dollars. And we added then department chair representation or subject representation in each building. So we captured the four core, we captured fine arts and special education, and we do the same thing in the middle school. We do the same thing at Lucas Corner Elementary and Monroe. So the building principals have teams. So that Dr. Hollisworth has a team of go-to people in the implementation of the programs that we have. And that we feel really strongly that that's a level of leadership on the academic side that's a stipend paid for in this recommendation. So that's included as well. I just want to summarize by saying there's one hundred forty-four critical positions. They impact a lot of kids every day. And if you take the recommendation with the total cost of the recommendation, it's about six hundred eighty dollars per position of an increase in Board of Education. And that's it. And nothing's changed since, well, for thirteen years. And now's really the time to make that consideration. So anyone else want to add? Otherwise, we'll take any questions. Otherwise we'll take any questions?
He said an increase of six hundred and eighty dollars per position.
Per position.
A hundred and forty-four, how many, a hundred and forty-four?
A hundred and forty-four.
Look at what you've saved for thirteen years.
I want to, I want to publicly thank the committee because they, they did a really nice job. You can see the passion that they brought. We, we did a lot of work. Thank you, thank you, thank you, members, I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you for your talk.
Thank you.
Very good.
Well, I have some questions to you. Well, first off, appreciate the work of the committee, everybody. We are blessed in this district to be able to have the fine arts and, uh, coaches and the great coaches that we have. Um, I appreciate, appreciate everybody there. One of the things that I would just like us to, to understand a little bit is if we were to look at how we pay for some of this, what would, what would it take to increase the pay to play number? Just, we gotta, we gotta spitball and figure out what options we have. It's just look at that and what that, what that would look like. And then also, you know, what is some of the data from the exit, do we do exit interviews for people that have stepped out of these roles in years? What's that data telling us, um, about that? So we don't, just kind of get some, some of that information, I think would be helpful. But, you know, what are some ways outside of, outside of the box thinking to help potentially pay for something?
I appreciate that and I'll, I'll get with Matt, we can talk about the participation levels and, and what those numbers are, what it might, how we might defer some of the cost to that increase. Uh, one of the things that Doug pointed out to me early in the process was we've got nine former head coaches, um, that are, that are no longer head coaches and no longer coaching anything in the district. And, uh, but they're still teaching. They've got a lot of, of skill and a lot of knowledge. And sometimes good old coaches go, go away, but they don't go completely away. They come back at the middle school, they come back at the preschool level and bring that level of expertise and experiences. Uh, but there's not been any interest because there, there hasn't been any financial incentive for them. And I think there's some financial incentive. This, this recommendation carries some longevity steps. Uh, and, and hopefully it comes to board of education once and gets folded into the contract and changes in the contract will impact supplemental contract changes in the future and you never have to hear from the committee again. I'll give it back. Thank you for the audience, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right. It's not long, we're going to wait there patiently, so academic report.
Mr. Fry, who's the podium question?
Do that for us.
Good evening. Um, tonight we're presenting for second reading our math pacing guides, grades K five, the pacing guides for the Bridges Math Program. And it's published by the Math Learning Center. And for six twelve, the pacing guides for the Envision Math Program, published by the Sappus Lab, represented last quarter in, um, Math for approval for this piece of text.
Okay. On second reading, it is recommended the Board of Education approve the same math pacing guide. Yes. So move.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Okay, roll call. Uh, Mrs. Story?
Yes.
Yes. Mr. Wolf?
Yes.
Mr. Zerl?
Yes.
Thank you. Also for a second reading, we're asking for approval of the text, How to Read Literature Like a Professor for Kids. This text would be used as a supplemental book in advanced E L A in grade eight, presented last month. Asking for approval.
Okay, on second reading, it is recommended the Board of Education approve the book, How to Read Literature Like a Professor for Kids. Also, I'll second. Any discussion? So this approval is just for eighth grade, right?
Correct, just advanced eighth grade.
All right. Any other questions? Roll call, uh, Mr. Wood? Yes. Mrs. Zerl?
Yes.
Mr. Wolf?
Yes.
Thank you. I also just wanted to share for a second that our, all of our K twelve math teachers and all of our administrators completed professional development before school started to prepare for their math implementation. And, uh, will continue that learning as we need priority each unit ongoing throughout the school year. Um, the math teachers are, I believe, very excited and very well-prepared to, to start this, um, math adoption. And then we'll be starting here very soon. This year, we're, um, going to be revising our science curriculum, our P E curriculum and our health curriculum. Thank you for coming down. We're still supporting E L A.
Good, good. Thanks, Doc. All right, communication report.
I'm going to actually move this podium back because it's coming off the part of Matt's head on my video, so.
Sorry about that.
All right, it's all right. Um, I have a lot of photos of things that have happened here in the first week. Some of these have been submitted to us on Facebook, posted by some of the schools, uh, some of them I took. But I just kind of wanted to run through them here tonight to show you guys what's all been going on in the first week. Uh, this isn't where it's supposed to start, but that's okay. This is from the color run, the Buffalo Color Run, that was out at the elementary on the twelfth of August. It went really, really well from what I was told. Jamie said he knew a bunch of these and they all had a great time. Here's another shot from the color run, we started the race. Um, this is from the middle of the race. I don't know, I've never been to any of these, has anyone ever, none of these? I have not. I, I can't fathom doing this, especially that early in the morning, getting up and running that far. That's not, that's not happening. So early in the week, I think we touched on this a little earlier in your report, this, the team building activities, some of the, some of the photos, some of them are really entertaining. This is from Monroe Elementary, they went to have a ball going up to the circus and learned how to be part of a circus performance. This is the team shot of them doing that and this is one of the demonstrations that they got to watch. Um, another one, the Locust Corner Elementary brought Camp Joy to campus and worked with them. Um, New Richmond Middle School here, they went to an escape room. They obviously can't take a lot of photos from inside the escape room, but here's one of the groups that completed the challenge. Uh, the high school hadn't submitted their photos in yet, but they went to a rope course for their team building activity.
Just to, just to interject for a second, Mr. Fry had written a grant, he had ten thousand dollars to help offset the cost of these, um, team building activities. So it did come out of general funds, thank you.
Thank you.
Your positive use of your short. Um, also this week, one in five came to campus for the recharge and reconnect. These are from the middle school. And it looks like this is the wheel, the circle of reconnecting or something along those lines. But it looked like from everything that I was told, everyone had a great time and everyone really goes, it was a little bit better. Um, hey, look at that.
That's a nice picture. What would be the great fall for?
Actually, actually, actually. Um, yeah, these are, these are from the convocation, this is my first convocation. And so I kind of wanted to, to see what all was about. I'm very thrilled to have been a part of it. Um, and it seems like from what I saw when they were walking across the stage, a lot of the staff members were happy about it too. Um, I will say that I was a mid-season replacement last year, so I didn't get to pick a walk-up song. And that's probably for the best because our movie wasn't out yet anyway. Athletics have started out in the past week or so. And tennis team was home for a couple of matches last week. Uh, they're four and one, they beat Western Brown, lead on Wednesday of last week because the rain tried to interfere, but they overcame that anyway. That, I, I, the records are a little spotty as you get further back, but I believe that's their best start in at least four years. They are home again tomorrow against Wilmington, have a chance to go ahead and support the tennis team. Uh, they're, they're pretty happy about that start too. The next day, thirteenth, seventeenth was the first day of school. This is the first day of photo from Locust Corner, the next couple of ones aren't. Um, they don't seem quite as happy to fit in on whatever's in the heat. But still great, the smiling faces all around. And from what I understand, the first couple of days went really, really smooth. This was the first football game Friday night. This was in Bethel, because they played the Tigers. Um, for some reason, and we couldn't quite figure out why, the Bethel student section was asked to sit down at one point. Twice, really? I didn't hear the first one. The kids were great, our, our kids were fantastic, they were respectful, they cheered, made you cheer and they helped the Lions to a very, very big win to start off the season. Um, so these are just some of the photos from the game. And it's, it was a very important win, a very big win and everyone's. Everyone's excited about that too. They have another big game at Williamsburg this week. Before that though, if you get the chance, trystatefootball.com, Cohen Manning is up for player. He had twelve catches, two hundred fifty-seven yards and four touchdowns.
Wow.
So I'm hoping for him to get the chance.
So, or about school record?
I would imagine, I thought it was, but I wasn't sure.
Brady Young, starters for school record also.
There you go, just records.
I think the marching band will be in there.
But not marching.
Not marching.
Williamsburg has like eight things going on, so if you go in there, draw the parks, uh, a lost one field, it gets shelved over.
Yeah, they're in Bill, Turpil, right?
Yeah, they're in, Bill Burr, Percy's Blockers, Heat Football, Two Miles. They have six things going on. So they want to take it in, they want to.
Before we come back, we'll have a random. Ed, so it's. Wait for the whole game.
All right, thanks, everybody. Anybody have a vision for a drawing picture? So move. Second, second. All right, roll call. No discussion. Any discussion? As everybody? Yes. Mrs. Story?
Yes.
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Thanks, everybody.